We talked about the need to develop a master plan for our parks system. Craig has an outline that he wants to share for his game plan on how we can accomplish that goal. That's the fundamental reason of tonight's work session presentation. He's got a few other options and then he'll go break up the floor.
Thanks, Craig.
Craig, I'm just turning the mic over to you whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right, this is a... Been working on this for quite a while and we look forward to bringing this to fruition and eventually have a plan of action that not only with this board, but the rest of the city can rely upon as far as future growth and so forth. This is a master plan from 2021 through 2035. And it's basically broken down into different components. But the table of contents is the introduction inventory analysis and research. And the whole process will really take six to eleven months. We hope to have done again. And the process will target fourteen years of growth from 2021 through 2035, as I've already mentioned. The process will involve a lot of data gathering, online mailouts, groups, meetings, focus meetings, events, and so forth. And to use incentive to fill out surveys for possible prizes. That's something that we're debating. It's not a done deal, but just trying to get people to interact. And the process will identify our service area targeting Moorestown, Hamlet County, and the Lakeway area. And for any future grants with TDEC, the city county must have an updated master plan. So everybody in the state now is doing masters, is going to be doing a master plan. And you have to update it every five years. So this is going to become mandatory for TDEC grants. Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation. We're going to use a twelve-member advisory committee will be selected to guide and participate in the process and the process of working on those. And I'll get to that more in a minute. And after the process is identified, a prioritized list then will be sent to our elected officials, you all, to seek cost estimates from a professional designer to give analysis and finalize cost options to begin implementation of the master plan over the next fourteen years. We're going to dream the dream and then we're going to let some private mentor or group come in and help us get the cost estimates and so forth, so to determine this. And our process will seek to understand organizational structure of Moorestown Parks and Rec, identify a mission statement for the master plan. We'll be doing that with the twelve-member advisory committee. We'll be going back and showing a lot of history of our department back a long time, back in the forties and thirties and forties, right on up until today's present. We'll be talking about staffing, we're looking at staffing, operational budget history, capital budget history. Input is our main goal, listen to the citizens. This master plan is not going to be my plan. It's not going to be Craig's prizes or anybody's. It's going to be done through the citizens of Moorestown. And they're, as they speak to us, do the online and the surveys and the focus meetings. And we're just input. We're going to be doing, I'm going to be doing, or a group of us, we're interviewing each one of you. You're going to be part of the process too. And so we're looking along that line to get to what we want to accomplish through the whole process. Areas of responsibility that we will be looking at, demand, supply, and needs analysis. We'll be looking at the responsibility of our parks. The landing, the partnership and cooperative agreements that we're going to have with the landing. Exercise wellness and fitness, there's all the thirteen parks. Special needs and ADA recommendation. We're going to be looking at courts, courses. Athletics, review current programs and certain new programs. Special events and programs, review programs, funding and the mechanism. Greenways, outdoor programs, camps, clinics, beautification, employee wellness, and equipment needs. Next is our visioning, the master plan and parks and recreation recommendations. We'll do a SWOT, there's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. We've already done that two or three times over the years, but we'll do a new one there. Our vision part one, we'll be looking at Frank Torino priorities, Fred Miller priorities, Wayne Hanser Park priorities, Fulton Hill Park priorities, Martin Luther King Park priorities. Our greenway recommendations, multi-use trails. Court space, tennis, pickleball, basketball, other. Field space, one of the things we could look at in the future is doing half and half. Our infield would be turf and then would be artificial turf. And then we'd have real grass in the outfield. That would help us so much in playing and draw people here for each of our fields. We're looking also at the Board of Education, the school park agreements and those. Staffing recommendations is part of the vision of part two. The staffing recommendations, revenue and growth plans. Future acquisition of park lands, east and south side facilities considerations. You know, we live in the third smallest geographic county in the state of Tennessee. Every inch of our land is going to become more and more valuable. And park space will definitely need to be part of that. We need to safeguard that for the future as we look at it, as we study this. In summary, the implementation of strategy, policy, recommendations, and funding strategies. Our focus will be on the future, identify and prioritize a plan of action that we can all use. And the master plan targets, like I said, it targets four areas. Our little master plan committee advisory council, we're going to have a member of the high group, member of industry, a business person, chamber of commerce, tourism, a member of the retired community, a member of education community, member of the whole Lakeway area community, member of the healthy community, member of diversity, and special populations and religious communities. So those twelve people will be making up this advisory council. And as far as our city staff that we're going to be using to work over the next six to nine months, not only the Parks Director Frankie and Mike will be part of the Parks Director, Steve Nelson from Planning Director and his staff, Lakeway Transportation, Rich DeGlozer, Community Development, Michelle Parton, going to rely heavily on her as far as the recording of the survey to get it out to the people in written form and then in digital form as well. And GIS is going to be a huge part of this. It's because we want to be able to track the responses from all over the county and the city for that. Ben Baker is going to help us there. And then Rachel is going to be working with us all the way through. And she's going to be their citizen information specialist. And she's going to help make it pretty, our final report, in the pictures and telling the story. She's going to make that along the way as well. And others as needed along the way. So we're going to involve a lot of city staff on this to get it accomplished. Each one, each area there, we've got GIS, Parks and Rec Advisory Council, Rick Board. So a lot of these, I won't read these to you all the way through, but it gets pretty adept there in looking at that as well. So any questions on that so far? It's going to be a process. And the biggest thing is to gather the information and then compile it and from demographics, everything. We'll be looking at all that along the way. You can take this and look at it and study, but this is what we plan to do, to get to the final product. And then, like I said, hopefully by next June seventh, we'll have a final report to you all to complete, to give closure to the master plan. And the master plan, you know, a lot of people do master plans. Sometimes they sit on a shelf, sometimes they're there, they use them. And it's, this one will help, will be one of a working progress. It'll be a measuring yard for us all. All of it can't be done. Some of it, it'll always be a work in progress. But the main thing is you've got something there to look at and to hold on to and help direct our path as we provide for the citizens of Moorestown and Hamlet County. I know it's a lot to look at right there.
One thing I'd like to point out, I know the council has talked about for some time now, the compensation for seasonal and part-time people and our overall staffing needs. We would propose that that be included as a component in this overall study. You had previously asked us to return something in the next two months. In this context, it would take a little longer to be able to do that. But I think it makes a more relevant report if we could do it in the context of the overall master plan. So we wanted to make sure that you are aware of our recommendation that we incorporate that into this folder and incorporate that and have the report available by, that's what you're saying.
Yes. The whole process is, like I said, it'll all need to be a working mechanism together. And I think the more we can take the time to look at those special areas, I think it'd be very advantage. And because like I said, in the planning process, you know, what you think is going to... You're going to see a lot more outdoor stuff that what people want and so forth. And just in talking with my peers, the people that have finished the master plans in the past few months and, you know, it's just not all sticks and ball in order. There's other things out there that people want to do and provide. And, you know, the biggest thing is the mechanisms as far as in the future stuff that we've done when we have surveys and so forth. The community center has always been addressed or been as far as one of the needs. But now that we're in the process of building the community center, that's been removed, you know. And a lot of what people tell us in this can be incorporated with the community center for those people from SFM, as they, as they can take a lot of the information that we gather to help in their programming as well.
Two points I'd like to make, Craig. One is concerning what Tony has just talked about. I don't have a problem with this being incorporated into this pay scale. We're talking about seasonal and part-time employees. I just don't want it to take another two years for us to start looking at it again. If we're going to, I mean, I think we have made the point that we want this looked at. Now, if it's in context with your master program, that's okay. But we want it to be something that's looked at pretty soon. The other thing is, I want to go ahead and get this out in the open. We've got a lot going on with Parks and Rec right now. And I have heard comments that people who were employed by Parks and Rec are concerned about their jobs, their employment, because of what we're doing with the community center. And I want you to know from, I think I'm speaking for the whole council here when I say, that's the furthest from the truth. The situation that we have is that we've got a lot going on and nobody needs to worry about their job. What we've got to do is worry about the future. Because in the future, Parks and Rec for Hamlet County, the employees of Parks and Recs are a major part of it.
Yes, they are.
So if somebody's concerned that SFM is going to come in and take over their job, that's certainly news to me and I need to know about it. So I don't think that's going to happen.
I don't think we know a lot of what's going to happen because we don't know the fee structure yet.
Well, I think you're saying to feel that way.
I do too.
I think that there may be something to it, I don't know.
I don't understand, Kay, what do you mean the fee structure?
We still don't know how much it's going to cost to... And when they gave us a business plan, I thought that they had, you know, we've underwritten a $750,000 in this year's upcoming budget. And I think that's to be carried out for several years. But we don't know, they've got a bottom line to meet. So we don't know what the, and that doesn't need to be put on our citizens to meet their bottom line. So that, I mean, they're unknowns.
Well, what I'm referring to is the employee who's there now with Public Works, I mean, Parks and Rec. The fee structure has nothing to do with us employing Parks and Rec people.
It's just a lot of unknowns, is what I'm saying. You're saying there's an unknown, there's a... Well, if you add to that, the other concern is, and I don't see it anywhere in here, Craig. We're talking about safeguarding park space and I don't see Tally Ward mentioned anywhere in here. It's not, if it's, I don't see it anywhere addressed. And that's another issue that's out there, has been since March. But we haven't, as a council, talked about it. There's a lot of discussion going on. And at the last Parks meeting, our Recreation Advisory Board meeting, I believe someone on the... I know someone on the board asked about it. And Bob is a member of that board and can verify it. And in response to their question, they were told it was just chatter. And it's not chatter. It's moving, it's moving very quickly and the decisions are being made without really council being involved as a body to ask for a work session on that. And I think we need to have a work session so that we can talk about it. And the public knows, because there is a lot of the public that doesn't know what's being considered about Parks and Rec, because a lot of the programs that are at Parks and Rec, I know we talk about people being emotional and having warm ideas about what went on when. Those same contacts and same changes and lies are making, taking place now. And I don't think that we, as a council, have really been brought up to speed or even had the opportunity to talk about it in the process. And it's kind of because the school system has $20 million coming to them and they have a deadline to put their, submit their proposal in August. We still, I mean, that's one more meeting in July. And whether or not it's the first meeting in August or the second meeting in August, that's a long time from March that we, as a council, have not talked about the pros and the cons in the future. And we're looking at it in a COVID environment, which is not fair. It's a brick and mortar building. And if we sell it to the school system, who's, who plans to, there was an article in the newspaper, they're calling it, I think, what, School to Work or something. We used to call it Co-op or Work Release. It's bringing back another program. And I think we need to look at, we use that in planning, the greater good for the greater number of people. I think we've got to look at, we've got to look at, it's not a business decision. It's not a paper transaction. It's just like we talked about insurance numbers. And Chris was the champion on that and found the money that we didn't have any work. We found the money to pay for that. There are people behind these numbers. And we, and there are people that have been there, staff people that have worked at Parks and Rec that have not been talked to. We can, you can go in the building and you can say, how's it going? How many people have been here? Oh, so many people came in and played basketball. This is COVID, this is now. You can't just make a decision based on that. And I don't know how many of us have really been in the building other than when we were there last year for a budget meeting and really get, you know, know what the environment is and knows who all it's touched. And the programs that are there, that you can rent out the rooms. I think $50 is the largest, the highest fee, is that correct, on the room rental at Tally Ward?
Thirty, I think.
And you have a variety. And I think we just really need to have an honest discussion about what are we going to give the population that uses Tally Ward when we remove that from circular, the opportunity? It's all free. You go in there and nothing, you pick up basketball, you play pickleball, am I correct? That's all free, you just go in. If it's a pickleball tournament going on or a game going on, you want to play free basketball, basketball pickup, whatever it is, you come back that afternoon. But if you want to rent a room, you pay otherwise. And that's something that is provided in that area, is accessible. And I don't think the landing is going to provide, we hope it would, in a utopic situation it would. But it will not provide for all the population that uses Tally Ward. Because it's a different environment.
Well, I don't, I certainly understand what you're saying, Kay. And I'm not saying that I disagree at all with anything you said. But the point I was making, and I think we got off that real quick, is I'm talking about the employees who are worried about their job. I've been told by two or three people, some on this council, that the employees are worried that this community center is going to eventually take over Parks and Rec. And my point is, the people who work at Parks and Rec right now do not need to worry about that. Because that's not going to happen.
You're also worried.
That's, I'm not also, I'm talking about the people who are worried about their jobs. Because I've been told that by some people. And I'm saying, I don't think this council is concerned at all about a good employee with Parks and Rec will, does not need to worry about their job.
Tally Ward employees are also worried. That's where I was coming from.
People who work for the city Parks and Rec do not have to worry about their jobs, in my opinion, if they're concerned about the community center.
Well, I think the kind of things that you're discussing, the things that happen when folks get the cart waiting for the horse, which is what we have at the moment. School system has a proposal they're going to present to their school board one week from tonight. And depending on whether that passes or not about the purchase of the building, that's when it comes to us. That's when it's discussed probably in a workshop form, much as this one or a presentation meeting or whatever. But it'll be presented, it'll be discussed. But it's been discussed prior because when we got out from the school system folks, if they had money and they had a program and they had something that they had put on a trial basis this year and had success with it for the last two years actually, is an opportunity to grow that program. And they kind of pinpointed Tally Ward as an area, if the city was interested in selling it, well, what's the proposal? We don't have a proposal. And it may not even pass the school board. If it doesn't, this is a moot issue. But I was, did understand that your advisory board passed a resolution asking the Tally Ward not be sold. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What was that vote? How did that...
It was unanimous, the six people that were there.
Was that something that was on the agenda or...
No, it was brought up by a board member and that's how it got there.
Okay, so has it been discussed among the advisory board about...
Just at that meeting, at that time, just some discussions, but it hadn't been, it didn't come from...
What they had heard was a lot of rumors, because they didn't know what the facts were. And they were trying to find out what the facts were.
Okay.
And I had breakfast with one of the board members at the school system, and I'm not sure if they'll pass it.
I think, I think it's kind of up in the air. But I took notice that there was not a mention in here of Tally Ward. Do you have an opinion on this? Or what is the value or the usage of Tally Ward now? I mean, was that resolution a surprise to you or what?
When, when, at the board member's...
I would imagine that the advisory board...
It was brought up, it was a question of what was going to happen with it. And after discussion, they made a motion to delete Tally Ward or leave it as it is.
Do you have an opinion on that or...
On what they voted on.
You said Tally Ward, how does it fit into the long-term program? Because I thought there might be something in here talking about if you're opposed to it. I mean, that's okay.
Well, my thing is, across the United States of America, in many cities and counties, they would love to have a gymnasium, meeting rooms, stage, and the whole works, restrooms and so forth. And they would love to have that. And we're willing to change the usage of it, like settle it to the school system. And to, you know, it's just, it's something that I'm not extremely supportive of because, you know, I just, I can see it being complimentary to the landing. And having worked here for almost thirty years and seeing the usage and how Tally Ward has been used and so forth. And yes, the last year and a half has been difficult for Tally Ward because, you know, we didn't decide until this last week that we were going to open back up full time. And, but it has been different. But, you know, we've got it on Tally Ward. We're still going to have to use Tally Ward or use school gyms even to supplement our basketball and volleyball space. Here regardless, we're still going to be using some school gyms even through using up the new community center. Because like I said, we, in the past, we have six to seven or eight gyms that we play in at the night. And right now, there's four gyms down at the landing.
I guess that's my question, Craig, is with Moorestown Landing up and rolling, it won't be, the second year won't be like the first, the third year won't be like the second. But you still see a role for the Tally Ward Recreation Center as Moorestown Landing grows?
A new gym floor, painted up, fixed it up, make it a beautiful place to come and visit. I can see people using it. And not only, we can rent it out for travel space. I mean, travel volleyball and wrestling, I mean, there's so many things that you could do with it. If you want to, it's just, it's just something that I can't, I'm not thrilled about losing Tally Ward. And I know some people don't want to hear me say that, but that's how I feel and I'm honest with you.
I have to agree with you.
It's in a good location.
It's not an easy for, come along to my knowledge, that it's city owned. And fulfill that environment.
And if you sell it, once it's done, you know, it's going to be gone. It's gone, it's gone.
Taxpayer's money, I don't think built that thing for my work and I think you're in this...
And I hate to shrug on this, I really do, you know.
Private donations is what built it.
But again, it's just, it's a tough decision. I love it, you know.
Well, we got to kind of, if that proposal makes its way from over at the old junior high over here, we rely on you to share with us why you think we should or we shouldn't. So that's, because really what we have to decide is what, how that building is purposed for the greatest number for the greatest good. It'll still serve the public, it's just who's doing the serving.
Well, y'all, I've worked here almost thirty years, you've heard me talk about opportunities. If it's not there for a person, you know, it's gone. And those opportunities, all you can do is wonder. You can, we talked about a dream here a few minutes ago. It's, it's... Any questions?
I think you have a good plan. And you're going to do a survey too, you said.
Oh, we'll do online and then we'll be doing the mailouts as well. Matter of fact, Michelle Parton and I have a meeting at 10:30 in the morning with the group about helping us develop. I've been working on questions and surveys, I mean, the questions survey for a few weeks and just trying to keep it simple but get effective.
I'd like, I would appreciate if you would go back on page two and add Tally Ward into the visioning. Because I think it's obviously, the mayor noticed that it wasn't there as well. And I think it's an integral part of our system. It's just like fifty-two acres at Moorestown College that is now Fulton Hill Park. And it took us twenty-five years to get it. But it's something that every city would love to have, fifty-two acres in the middle of their city to have turned into something that we've turned into. And that's, I consider, a mayor, you've mentioned it several times, a crown jewel for us here in Moorestown. And I think that that Knoxville, Johnson City, Kingsport all have what you would call an ancillary building, which would be the recreation facility that we have in Tally Ward.
And do I understand you're going to create an additional advisory board in addition to the board that you have now?
This is a steering committee of people, seeking people that aren't attached to any programs and so forth. But yeah, people that can, hopefully we might have a lot of our meetings from three to five o'clock over the next few months and so forth. A lot of this will be done online, emails and so forth. But it's, I've got most of them all selected. I've used other people to help select them. These people are not all my appointments and so forth. So if that occurs, we can talk about it. But, you know, it's just, I just, I just want an effort to come together to give what the people really envisioned for Moorestown Parks and Rec.
Let me, let me just make a point here, if I may, Mayor. I think, Craig, under your leadership, you, and I've been involved in this in four or five different communities. I think under your leadership, you have one of the greatest Parks and Rec complexes that I've ever seen. I think that's a compliment to you. I think it's a compliment to the employees and their dedication to the city. And that, I don't mean to take away from Tally Ward. I don't mean to take away from the community center, whether it's on the east end or west end or what's on the east side of town or what's on the west side of town. We have an absolute fabulous Parks and Rec program in Moorestown. And I think for us to be able to be the hub city between Knoxville and Johnson City and Kingsport, Bristol, we have to have that. And you have provided that, and I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's, again, this is, this is about all county and all city, people that use our parks and so forth and, you know, just having an opportunity for them to have a future park in their area or whatever is key and vital. And it's not going to happen, it won't happen in 2035. But again, it's a process and we're going to work together to get this and accomplish it and put it into a nice little package form without spending a boatload of money. Maybe this whole process, we might end up spending in the neighborhood $10,000 or $20,000 instead of $125,000.
On the master plan.
On the master plan, yes. Do you have any other questions? I want to be here. As far as Fulton Hill Park, the, what I want to do at the Rec Board meeting next Monday, we're going to work to give closure to our rules and regulations. And we've already done the fees and charges at last month's meeting. And through the Title 20, the Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Board has the authority to do this and be able to approve the rules and take care and handle that. We're going to take this and get this, give closure. I want to give closure to this Red Bull. It's gone way too long. But that's what we're planning on doing through the Rec Board is to do the fees and charges, which we've already done, and then the rules and regulations and not that.
Can you be able to get those rules on an index card?
This is the rules, Gary. I don't think they'll fit on there.
The index card? No, I want to take, I want to take here, if you're signing up here, get rid of Heritage Park eventually. But we're getting ready to maybe have a meeting where we can give closure to our branding and our new logo from Parks and Rec. So we're going to work on that as well. So we'll have all those Heritage Park signs gone and have Fulton Hill Park signs up in the near future. I wouldn't know anything.
Along with what Craig said, Mayor, I'd like for us, when we were talking about whether or not the rules have been adopted, Lauren looked up the code force and in that mentions, as we saw, that Heritage Park is still in the ordinance. So I think we need to go through and take out Heritage. And then over here, look in JJ, which does.
JJ and KK.
Right. Both talk about the fact that you need to be posted. I think maybe that section needs to be reworded because these, you're not going to be posting Fulton Hill event things there. And then it talks about the municipal pool. So maybe your department needs to look over all of it. On page 11, it has municipal pool. Is the landing?
I don't think I got those rules.
I read them off myself. It's just my, I made my, oh, the rules, these we got a long time ago.
What are you talking about? The Title 20 stuff?
I don't know which one. You talking about the park rules or the ordinance?
The, did you pass out?
No, but I can. These are actually.
I just thought Kay had the rules there.
No, these are what time you got. Is it just different?
No, it's identical. It's identical. Basically, just need another one I could give to you.
I think the higher needs one. But in that one, is the, is the pool at the landing going to be considered a municipal pool or are they going to have their own rules or how does that work?
I don't understand the question.
In our ordinance on Parks and Recreation Rules and Regulations, I didn't run off all of them, but on page 11, it talks about pools.
Page 11.
Of the ordinance or whatever the last page. That's the way it was numbered on my computer.
Okay. Do you have a code section?
Code section, Title 20.
20, 102.
20, 10101. And then you've got 102 and I didn't run off the last part. But it has, there's a whole section on municipal pools, is what I'm saying. I'm thinking the whole thing probably needs to be gone of.
CC, Tony.
CC?
Yes, the section CC.
CC, C.
I'm just recommending that the whole section go up. You think that would be beneficial, Craig, if you reviewed this?
If you don't care, I'd like you and Lauren to go through that. We'll nip it in the bud.
Sounds good.
Is that okay, Lauren?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate you bringing those rules up for the next meeting.
Anything else? Any other issues?
Thank you, Craig. It's like you have ambitious plan headed.
There's going to be a lot of people helping me. Thank you.
Are there any other items to come forward, counsel?